Good evening. It is April 5th, 2022. Time is 6:32. Welcome to this meeting of the Hingham Select Board. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and I will call on our Army Reserve Officer, Bill Ramsey, to lead us.
Please stand and face the flag of our nation.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. Next item on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have three minutes. We're considering this evening March 15th, March 16th, and March 22nd. March was a banner year for us. So I'm prepared to move forward with all three. Liz?
I'm prepared.
Bill?
I'm prepared.
And I'm prepared to accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 15th, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 16th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. And finally, the minutes for March 22nd.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 22nd, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Wonderful. Next item on our agenda is to consider voting to confirm the postponement of the 2022 Town of Hingham Annual Election to May 14th, 2022 pursuant to Chapter 36 of the Acts of 2022. At a prior meeting, we voted to postpone the annual election, but we were waiting for the state legislature to act. They have acted. And so I'm now going to consider confirming our prior vote to postpone the election to May 14th. Any discussion? Liz?
No discussion. No questions.
Any member of the public? Then I'm ready to accept a motion.
I will make a motion to confirm the postponement of the Town of Hingham Annual Election from Saturday, April 30th, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., to Saturday, May 14th, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., pursuant to Chapter 36 of the Acts of 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. It's unanimous. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Sharon Bowen on behalf of the South Shore Conservatory for the performance of adult concert and reception to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on Saturday, April 6th, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Is Sharon here? Sharon, just give us a brief description of what's being proposed, and if you can go out to the podium so that the world can see and hear you.
Okay. So basically, we have got a two-and-a-half-day fundraising event at South Shore Conservatory this weekend. It's actually the 9th, not the 6th. It's Saturday, the 9th. And I work as the donor relations manager in the development department. And we are just having some of our adult students come into the conservatory on Saturday evening. We're just going to set it up cabaret-style with some wine and cheese and crackers and desserts and things like that. Very informal. They will get up on stage and, you know, perform something.
And what's your estimate of attendance?
We were kind of hoping for 65, but right now it looks more like 45.
Would you like us to drum up some support?
Yes, please. Anybody's welcome.
Absolutely. Sounds like a delightful evening. Chief, have you reviewed the application?
I have, yes.
And?
No issues.
Great. Thank you. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Sounds like a great event.
Bill?
No questions. I know that commonly do fundraisers at the conservatory, so I'm sure this is going to be similar to that.
Yes, it is.
Best of luck with the event.
Thank you very much. And you'll see me again because we've plenty more coming up over the summer, I hope.
So if people want more information, where can they go to get that?
They can go to the website, sscmusic.org. Or, I mean, if anybody wants my email, I'm happy to give my email to anyone, too.
I think the website is good.
Yeah. The email's on the application, actually.
Great. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Sharon Bohan on behalf of the South Shore Conservatory for the Perform-a-thon Adult Concert and Reception to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on Saturday, April 9th, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We vote? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Next item on our agenda is to consider the amendments to the Town of Hingham COVID-19 Temporary Policy Regarding Restaurant Outdoor Table Service, including but not limited to extending the term of the policy and extending existing OTS approvals and related sidewalk licenses. And I see that we have the town's real estate council, Susan Murphy, here. And if you would please walk us through what's being proposed.
Yeah, so the town originally adopted, the Select Board originally adopted this policy in 2020 in response to Governor Baker's executive orders establishing the outdoor table service. That was, at the time, it was because restaurants were not permitted to serve customers inside. They were trying to help keep their restaurants afloat. It's been very popular, both with the restaurant owners and with the public. The major change with this, which has now been codified through an act of the legislature, is that it overrides local zoning. So when dining got expanded to be on sidewalks or in parking lots, et cetera, and could potentially impact things like parking, safety, et cetera, the governor's order and now the act puts it on the chief executive officer, in this case, the Select Board in Hingham, to establish the policy and review the applications. The town had set up what was known as, or is known as, the Restaurant Reopening Group, which was made up of various town officials from planning, building, public safety, board of health, to review the applications at the time and to make recommendations. The Select Board, the Select Board had issued 14 of these approvals between 2020 and 2021. It was set to expire on April 1st last week, last Friday. On April 1st, the governor signed legislation which extended the authority of the Select Board to grant and extend these approvals until April 1st, 2023. However, the original policy that the Board adopted still referenced the state of emergency, all of the COVID social distancing requirements, both state and local, and also, you know, it had expiration dates based off the state of emergency, et cetera. So with the passage of the recent extension by the legislature, we revisited the policy to substantially update it to reflect the current state of the law and also to address a few issues which are raised by continuing this policy of overriding zoning. For example, as we mentioned, at the time, there was no indoor dining. So having outdoor dining was not an impact on things like septic systems. However, if restaurants are going to be going potentially full-capacity indoors and have this extended capacity outdoors, about five of the businesses are on septic systems. There's concerns of the Board of Health that they're not overtaxing septic systems. So there's trade-offs, you know? There's, you know, the bad with the good here of extending what is a very popular policy. So what's before the Board tonight is to adopt the amended policy and also to extend a number of OTS approvals. I can walk through what they are for the various businesses, if you'd like me to, and to propose some, you know, new or additional conditions to the existing permits in order to cover any concerns that arise now that everyone's fully open at full capacity.
So I think what makes sense is there's two separate votes here. And the first one is the policy, and the second one is going to get more specific. So we can talk about the policy. And you've touched on a number of the topics that I was going to ask about, but let me, I'll give you all the topics, and then you tell me which ones you want to respond. First is the reaction that restaurants have had to our policy, whether it meets their needs. Second, the impact on neighbors, because if a restaurant is perhaps using sidewalk space that might interfere with other businesses' their uses, whether or not that's been an issue. Parking, whether or not there's sufficient parking to support the expanded uses here. And then finally, septic, which you've touched on.
Right. So all of...
It was the restaurants, the neighbors, parking, and septic were the four topics.
Right. So all of those topics, with the caveat that now we're talking about potential full-capacity indoors and outdoors, but all of those topics were touched upon by the town officials that were part of the Restaurant Reopening Group. I'm not aware, and I hate to put the chief on the spot here, but I'm not aware of complaints with respect to any of the outdoor dining, but...
Neither am I, yeah.
You don't have any.
Yep. So as far as we know, there's been no either resident or a butter complaints with the operation for the last two or so years that they've been in effect. The parking, it may be on a case-by-case basis. I think, you know, right now, the permits have, the approvals have always had conditions that said that additional conditions may be imposed for public safety purposes of, that would relate to parking as well. So if it does appear that with any of these businesses kind of in full, and not only these businesses being in full operation, but now if they're in shopping centers, et cetera, all of the businesses around them are now in full operation, the town does have the ability, if any problems start arising, if, you know, your office, the police department, get any calls, that that business could be asked to meet with town officials and, if necessary, come back to the Board to talk about how to adjust that. With respect to septic systems, Susan Sarni, the town's health officer, has been in the loop in the emails the last couple of days with Sharon Perfetti, who, as you know, works for the Board on all the liquor license issues, in order to determine whether or not the, all these, the five restaurants that are on septic systems will be able to operate at full capacity indoors and outdoors. So one of the conditions that is proposed for the Board is a specific call-out saying that, notwithstanding issue instead of an OTS approval, the actual seating may be limited by the Title V restrictions. Susan Sarni has also asked that for those businesses on septic, that a cover letter go out with their extensions, stating that they need to communicate with her office in order to confirm that they have adequate septic capacity for the number of seats that they hope to operate. So that's one of the adjustments that's being made.
Are there any adjustments from a public safety standpoint? In other words, the barriers to keep cars from going into where people are dining, are they sufficient? Do they need to be redesigned? Or is that something that's more case-by-case as we go through the list?
Currently, the extensions are only being granted to allow the outdoor dining that was originally approved for each of these businesses. At that time, all of the safety barriers were reviewed by Public Safety, and, you know, and it was approved by the Board at that time. I believe that Sharon is reaching out to the restaurants that if they have modified or hope to modify what they're doing, they have to get in touch with her. And if there's any modifications to the plan, they would go back through the Restaurant Reopening Group and potentially have to come back to the Board. But everyone should be operating under their original plans. No one's been given permission to modify their plans. So, you know, we'll have to see how those play out this season.
So I'm going to turn it over to my fellow Board members, but I do want to say that the comments that I've received from members of the public has just been exceptionally positive. They enjoy the experience. I know the restaurants do, and looking forward to making this happen. Liz?
Excellent. Thank you. Yes, all of the feedback that I've received has been extremely positive for restaurant owners and certainly people that live here and dine here and visit. So thrilled to see this continuing. I was going to ask about the septic. I know that applies to the range, and there are four other restaurants that that applies to. As far as ADA compliance, has that been, I'm sure you've covered that, but can you just speak to that a little bit?
Right, so the building commissioner oversees ADA compliance, particularly with the sidewalks. He, you know, when they came in with their plans, they were required to show the necessary width for wheelchair accessibility. And that also obviously assists people with strollers and to make sure people can pass each other. You know, in some instances, there was a little bit of stretching of areas, but when those businesses were spoken to, they pulled things back as necessary. So it's, I think it's been a pretty cooperative exercise. Obviously, I'm not involved in that directly, but I work closely with the town officials. And I know if there's been issues, they've worked with the restaurants, and everything, and issues have been resolved.
Excellent. Thank you. So, yeah, no other questions. Just to confirm, this is just a one-year extension, and there's no fees associated with it for the restaurants?
Correct.
Bill?
Just a couple of comments. You know, I think this is a wonderful program, so thank you for your work on this, Susan. The ability of restaurants to completely increase their capacity through this program has been a major plus for the restaurants that have taken advantage of it. Patrons that have been able to eat outside, particularly in the summertime and the warm summer nights, have loved the program. The restaurants in the square that have utilized this program have really added to the ambiance of the square. I think it's a really nice addition to have this program in place in the downtown area and other parts of town. So it's been really successful for our town to have this in place. One thing I would like to add, that it is a one-year extension, and I'm grateful for the legislature for doing this, but it is a one-year extension. We've had two restaurants come in who have gone through the permitting process so far. It's going to require a special permit from the, probably from the zoning board, from the planning board. You probably will need a permit from us as well. And they've gone through the process, and they've been able to increase this program in perpetuity. Those restaurants that haven't done that, this is only going to be for a year. I don't think the legislature will increase this program beyond April of '23. So if you're a restaurant owner, and this is a program that you like taking advantage of, I would once again encourage you to use this year to reach out to our permitting staff to start this process. The year goes by fast. Our permitting staff has been extremely user-friendly to restaurants and helping them, guide them through the process. Like I said, we've had two restaurants go through it already. They've already successfully completed the process itself. They've been very happy with the results. So do not wait until March of '23 to start the process because in April, they will not have the permits in place. So great to see this in place. I'm thankful for the legislature for increasing it again. And like I said, it's just, it's so nice to, you know, to go walk in a downtown area and just to hear the soft noise of people enjoying dinner and have those seats in place, and just thrilled that we're going to continue to enjoy this program. So thank you.
Absolutely. Maybe we can have one of our Select Board meetings outdoors at one of these restaurants.
To be fair, we'd have to do every one of the restaurants.
Well, that, absolutely.
You have a lot of good restaurants in town.
So at this point, I'll open it up to members of the public if they have questions related to the policy that is before us concerning outdoor seating. I am seeing none, so I'm prepared to take the first vote that's before us this evening.
I will make a motion that the Board amend the Town of Hingham COVID-19 Temporary Policy Regarding Restaurant Outdoor Table Service in its entirety in the form of the draft dated April 5th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. And again, just emphasizing Bill's point and what Liz just said as she read the motion. This is a temporary policy, and if our restaurants are looking for more permanent relief, go through the permitting process. Bill has been a strong advocate to make that happen. Looking forward to more restaurants taking advantage. So now we proceed to the second vote that concerns specific restaurants. Susan, if you could walk us through that.
Right, so as I mentioned, there are 14 approvals that the Board has given to date. I just wanted to break down for the Board what's in front of you because not all 14 of those are being extended tonight for different reasons. So the first one is the Square Cafe. As you know, the Square Cafe has already gone through planning and zoning, and they've already been in front of this Board, and they have been granted by the ABCC a permanent modification rather than the temporary one, which the OTS. So they are good to go. They're operating now. They don't need an OTS approval anymore. Legal Sea Bar and Locales Tacos have gone through planning and zoning as well. They, I believe they're coming in front of the Board to have approval of a permanent modification of their liquor license. And so temporarily, until that is approved by this Board and then goes to the ABCC, they still need an OTS permit, so they are on the list for tonight. But once they get the final approvals, they will, they'll no longer be operating under OTS. They'll be under their regular liquor license. There's a number, let me count here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. So there's 10 others in addition to those two that are coming, that are going to be extended if the Board so votes tonight. Five of them have septic systems, so they'll be notified that they have to reconcile that with the Board of Health and their septic systems. It probably wouldn't be too pleasant to be sitting outside if you have a septic system that's failing anyway, so it's probably in everybody's interest that that get addressed. So those restaurants are also, I believe that Sharon's also going to be in touch or has been in touch with these restaurants to let them know that they need to operate under their existing plans, and any changes have to come to the town. If the Board votes to extend their approvals, they'll get an extension. They'll get a extension of their permit, a written extension. So Sharon will be in touch with them. There's one establishment, Brewed Awakenings, down in Square. They were issued an OTS permit, but if, I'll reference the definition of outdoor table service under the Act. It is only for restaurants that serve seated customers at their table. So it has to be wait service, a wait person, and they do not have that. I understand that Sharon Perfetti has been in touch with the owner or potentially a future owner who might want to put a number of tables outside, and they're being advised that they just need to come to the Select Board to get a sidewalk license. So that would have to be handled through a different process. So they are not on the list for an extension tonight.
Very thorough. Liz, any questions?
Can you just tell us the other ones that are on septic?
The ones that are on septic are the two at the Derby Street Shops, so Legal Sea and Burton's, the South Shore Sports Center, The Range, and Vita Mexicana is up at Queen Anne's Corner. You know, to the extent that some of these may or may not even take advantage of the outdoor, that's one of the things that, you know, Sharon in your office is, it's going to confirm and try to, and figure out the extent to which the businesses plan on utilizing this this year.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Bill? I know additional questions. Thank you.
I just want to confirm with the chief that you're not aware of any reasons that any of these specific restaurants have raised public safety issues, either police or fire?
Right, as far as I'm aware, none.
Okay, great. Any member of the public with comments or questions concerning outdoor table service for the restaurants? I am seeing none. I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'd make a motion that the Board amend the outdoor table service approvals granted to the following establishments by extending the expiration date of each OTS approval to expire on April 1st, 2023. The rescission date, provided, however, that if the rescission date is extended by the legislature, the rescission date shall be such the extended date unless the Select Board, in its discretion, sets an earlier expiration date and subject to the following additional general conditions. One, this extension is granted subject to the approval plan previously approved and attached to or referenced in the original OTS approval. Any modification to the location, size, layout, or seating capacity of the OTS premises from the original approval, approved plan is subject to review and approval by the Select Board. Two, this OTS approval, as extended, is subject to all other applicable federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and permits. Without limiting the foregoing and notwithstanding the grant of this OTS approval, the establishment shall be subject to any restriction on total indoor and outdoor seating capacity pursuant to Title V of the State Environmental Code. Four, except as expressly modified herein, all general conditions and special conditions of the original OTS approval and prior extensions thereof remain in full force and effect. Five, the establishment may be subject to periodic inspection for compliance with this approval. Failure to comply with this approval may result in suspension or revocation of this approval and in fines in accordance with Massachusetts law. 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC doing business as 99 Restaurant &amp; Pub. Shipyard Ventures LLC doing business as Almanove. MCC4LBD LLC doing business as Boathouse Bistro. Burton's Grill of Hingham LLC doing business as Burton's Grill. Legal Sea Foods LLC doing business as Legal Sea Bar. Locales Taco LLC doing business as Locales Tacos &amp; Tequila. Lima Sports Incorporated doing business as South Shore Sports Center. The Range Hingham LLC doing business as The Range. BE&amp;E Incorporated doing business as The Snug. Eatwell Inc. doing business as Tosca. Plaza Azteca Hingham Incorporated doing business as Vita Mexicana. Paragon Funding Group LLC doing business as Wahlburgers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Susan? Thank you very much. Very thorough. And we wish the restaurants well. We wish that they prosper, and we're all looking forward to dining there. How are we doing now? Perfect. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the petition from National Grid to install and maintain approximately 64 feet of 4-inch gas main in Downer Avenue. And I believe we have our town engineer, J.R. Frye, here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is new.
Yes, isn't it?
Town engineer, J.R. Frye.
And we're having no problems with the connection with you. This is perfect.
Excellent. Does the Select Board have the plans?
We do.
Okay.
Do you need a copy for you?
I don't.
Okay.
Ultimately, what this is, is a continuation of work that National Grid... Ultimately, what this is, is a continuation of work that National Grid has already initiated on Thaxter Street. However, due to the poor condition of the pipe that was identified in the roadway, they were unable to reconnect as they originally planned. And because of the extent and length, as well as crossing state highway layout and entering a new right-of-way for the town that was not previously referenced, we thought it would be best practice to obtain a grant of location for this location as well. It is required, and that's why we kind of expedited it as quickly as possible because as soon as they get this approval, they will be able to gas up the new main and begin connecting services.
And so typically, there are pre-construction meetings, and I'm just seeing that it's not planned for this particular project.
It is not planned for this particular project because it's, they're in progress.
Yep. And have affected abutters been notified?
The affected abutters have been notified, so those would be the immediate abutters, as well as Foster School has been notified directly. And we worked with the Transportation Department of the school district to specify specific times that the road must be open for the passage of school buses and people dropping off children and picking up.
And I'm not commenting on this particular project, but I know in other projects, when they put the steel plates down, sometimes it's, it's rough on people's vehicles. What are the plans for that?
They know that when they put plates down, they're required to notify us, they're required to ramp those plates and pin them in place. I'm not, I don't anticipate that they will need to do that for this, and they should be in and out in about two days.
Oh, great. Liz, any questions?
Thank you, J.R. And I know the work on Thaxter is happening as we speak, so when, when do they expect to do this work on Downer?
They had hoped to begin it last week.
Okay.
So they do, they also need to come all the way across Lincoln Street where it's, where it's state highway layout. I was told that they, their working relationship with Mast dot is such that they were given verbal authorization to proceed with that work, and so I've got a copy of that email.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, and thank you for working with the school department in terms of foster.
Phil?
So it's going to be two days?
Approximately.
Because I know that is, I mean, that Lincoln, Downer, Broad Cove, that's probably one of the most major intersections in town.
Sure.
You've got that, you've got those four roads converging there.
Yep. Most of the work that we're discussing is going to be on, just on the Downer Ave side. We're not really discussing the state highway layout. They may choose to do that per their typical working arrangement, which may be an evening operation or something to avoid significant traffic disruption.
Okay, so are they going to do the work in the intersection itself or just on the Downer Ave side?
They'll have to do work all the way through the intersection. They'll be tying into mains on both sides, the north side and south side of Lincoln Street, as well as tying into the main on Downer.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear that if they do work, intersection would be in the evening. That would disrupt.
I, I can't guarantee that, but I would imagine that that is what Mast dot will look for.
Okay, great. Thanks, Sharon.
Tom, question for you.
Yep.
Is there any budget impact on the town with this work?
No.
None. Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public comments or questions concerning the gas main replacement quest on Downer Ave from Thaxter Street? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 64 feet of 4-inch gas main in Downer Avenue. This work is an extension of the work currently in progress in Thaxter Street and is necessary to complete that work. The gas main in Downer Avenue will originate at the intersection of Downer Avenue and Lincoln Street as a continuation of the gas main in Thaxter Street crossing Lincoln Street, connecting into the existing 4-inch plastic gas main in Downer Avenue. These gas mains will replace existing 3-inch bare steel. The age of the abandoned main is 83 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated May 31, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is also unanimous. Thank you, J.R. I appreciate it. Next item on our agenda, and you can stay there, on the hot seat, is to consider approval of the petition from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to install MBTA bus system infrastructure improvements to improve accessibility at the intersection of Otis Street and Governor Long Road. And then I notice that we have a companion item before us, to consider approval of the petition of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to install MBTA bus system infrastructure improvements to improve accessibility at the intersection of Otis Street and Broad Cove Road. So I think both of those items are before us. If you could bring us up to speed, J.R., because we, this board already had a hearing on the intersection of Otis and Broad Cove, and now we have that coming back as well as one for Otis Street and Governor Long.
Yes, so.
And we do have the packets.
Great. So we approached you originally with a couple separate intersections where MBTA was proposing to do improvements to improve accessibility as part of their PATTY project. And Natasha will explain more about that in a moment. Natasha Vance and Corinne Tobias are here from the MBTA, so they'll be able to talk a little bit more about that. But as to the process, we brought those before you, and there was one location that did not have any objection, and we were able to move forward with that.
Yes.
And there was, and the location at Otis and Broad Cove had some significant questions that were raised during the public meeting. So we did proceed with discussing the concerns with several of the residents. We also had several traffic committee meetings on this subject to review what our options were in terms of proposed design and what we could do to mitigate the issues related to that particular intersection. And so through the course of those, the traffic committee approved, improved, approved a recommendation to make significant improvements at, and MBTA has agreed to proceed with these improvements at the intersection of Broad Cove Road and Otis Street. These improvements would advance a design that was prepared as part of the Route 3A Improvement Project and significantly improves the safety of that intersection by slowing down vehicles that are approaching Otis Street northbound and where they can currently drive straight up the road without slowing down at all. They will have to make a proper right turn onto, onto Otis Street now, and that movement will reduce their speeds, I believe the design speed on that curve is about 15 to 20 miles an hour. So there will be, all of these vehicles will be forced physically to slow down in order to make that curve safely. So along, all of these improvements that the MBTA is, has agreed to make roughly three years in advance of what we would otherwise achieve with the Route 3A project include a significant amount of new curb installation, creating a bump out to both focus and direct the traffic appropriately and to reduce the apparent width of the roadway for road users so that they do not have the feeling that they have all of that real estate to utilize. And then in addition to that, obviously, they'll be installing sidewalk, ADA compliant ramps, removing and relocating the existing traffic island to meet the geometric requirements of the intersection, and making sure that the actual stops, which are up the road from Broad Cove, some 60 to 80 feet, that those stops meet their requirements by providing a landing area and clear zone for their buses to operate.
Could you talk a little bit about the accessibility issues and what's being done to, to make them more accessible? And I don't know if you want to have.
Sure. I think at this time it's appropriate to invite Natasha Vance and Corinne Tobias.
Yeah. Hi. If you can just introduce yourself so that we all know who you are.
Sure. I'm Natasha Vance. I work for the MBTA. I'm the project manager for the PATTY project. PATTY stands for the Plan for Accessible Transit Infrastructure. The scope of the project is to take inaccessible bus stops, such as the ones that we're discussing here, and make them accessible. As, as J.R. mentioned, we are looking at four different bus stops in the Town of Hingham. We have approval for one. There were some significant safety concerns for Otis and Broad Cove. We looked at the design of 3A, and we're going to incorporate all of those elements into slow down traffic to make it safer for people who are making the turn, anyone who's walking across that crosswalk, and if the bus is stopped there, so that cars have sufficient stopping sight distance when they're making that turn. And Corinne can go into the more detailed portions. But the, 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 one thing I do want to bring up is at this, at the particular location, Otis and Broad Cove, we're, we're very concerned about that location because we do know that there's a disabled bus rider who lives right across the street, and we want to ensure that she is able to get on the bus, get on and off the bus safely. So a couple elements of an accessible bus stop is a landing area. The landing area is the area where the, the bus ramp actually folds out. It needs to be eight foot by 10 foot. It can be eight foot by five foot, but ideally it would be eight foot by 10 foot. And then there's a clear zone, which is where the back doors of the bus open to allow people to get on and off in that location. And then for the bus stop to be considered truly accessible, it has to have an accessible path of travel, which would mean that someone who is disabled getting on or off at the bus stop would be able to get to another location, so they wouldn't be stranded in that location. The current bus stops would strand a disabled rider because they're essentially a grass strip on the side of the road, and there's no safe place to cross. So I think that that sums up the PATTY project, and then maybe Corinne can speak to the details.
Please.
So, for this?
Don't start until you're up there. And then introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Corinne Tobias with Green International as the design consultant for these stops. So with respect to the Otis and Broad Cove Road stops, what we're doing there is we're introducing significant bump outs, which, as mentioned, significantly reduce the travel speed there, which, you know, a travel study showed that, a speed study showed that people are currently driving at quite high speeds, you know, 40, 50 miles an hour.
You wouldn't do that in Hingham.
But it really does, the bump out will force people to, to take that true right turn. And in addition, one other thing that was, wasn't mentioned is that the bump outs also reduce the crossing distance for pedestrians, and so they won't have quite so long a distance to cross, and there will be a pedestrian refuge in the center island as well, so you can do it in halves, so you only have to get across one direction of traffic at a time. And in addition, I know there were some concerns about the, the visibility of the crosswalk as well, so the crosswalk itself has been moved down closer to the intersection so that now it's visible, it will be much more visible from Broad Cove Road in addition to people already traveling on Otis Street. So with respect to the process, we're, you know, currently going through, we, we will have to go through Mast DOT permitting because we're going to be within their right-of-way. But since we're taking over what, what's essentially part of their design for Route 3A, we anticipate that to be a fairly smooth process, and we've been coordinating with them to make sure that we're meeting essentially their final design so that when they come in, it'll be a smooth process to finish up at that location. So those, those are the, the primary changes. We think it's a big improvement with respect to speed, with respect to visibility, and also reducing the crossing distance for pedestrians at that location. And yeah, that's kind of, that's, that's most of it for that stop, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions that people may have.
Anything you want to add with respect to the, the other location at Governor Long Road?
Yep. So for the Governor Long Road stop that is on a much straighter section of roadway, so there were, were not nearly as many concerns there with respect to, to speed and safety. We will be doing a little bit of landscape change, mainly the impacts will be to some of the landscaping there, but it will all be within the Hingham right-of-way, so we won't be impacting anyone's private property. And in addition, the bus stop may help prevent people from sort of parking on the sidewalk, which we know has been an issue there and why some of that landscaping is in place. You know, other than that, that's, it's a fairly straightforward stop. We will still have the accessible landing areas and an accessible path across Governor Long Road at that location.
So for both locations, is all the work going to be done on public property and not on private?
That's correct.
I mean, one of the topics that the Town of Hingham has been looking at, came out in our master plan process, is addressing accessibility issues. And this goes a long way, and it is something that the town supports. So, so thank you. Liz?
Yes, thank you for all of your work on this and patience with the process. It sounds like we came to a, a much better solution, so thank you. Are there any, J.R., are there any concerns from residents that we, you feel like we haven't addressed?
I think we've addressed them to the best of our ability.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. No, I appreciate, I know the safety concerns, you know, especially with that crosswalk were, were the main, I think, main points of feedback that we heard, so I'm glad those were addressed. And certainly accessibility townwide is, is a goal for us, so appreciate your help in, in achieving that.
Phil, thank you. So on Otis Street, so the sidewalk, I guess on the westerly side of Otis, correct? And there's not, if my memory is correct, there's not a sidewalk on the easterly side?
That's correct.
That's correct. So if, if the, if someone, if the bus is stopping, going north, and, and someone in a wheelchair needs to get off the bus to get, I'm looking at the diagram here, needs to get to that crosswalk, is there, it doesn't, is there going to be enough space on the side of the road for someone to, you know, traverse from the back of the bus to the crosswalk? What I'm concerned about, once the bus leaves and continues northbound, is there enough, if there, if there enough side of the road here so someone's not exposed to oncoming traffic to get to the sidewalk? I'm sorry, to get to the crosswalk.
So the sidewalk and that section will be redone all the way to the intersection? We're talking about Otis and Broad Cove here, correct? I just want to make sure I'm on the same page as you.
I'm looking at the diagram on Otis.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
You see I'm talking?
Yeah. So for the, the west side of the road?
Yep.
So that sidewalk will be redone as well, and there will be a bump out on that side?
Oh, there'll be a bump out to allow someone to safely get to that crosswalk?
Correct. There will be bump outs on both sides of the intersection.
All right. And maybe for the chief or J.R., has Sergeant Kirori, has he endorsed this plan?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
So Liz asked whether or not this addresses concerns of members of the public. Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions concerning the proposals both at Otis Street and Governor Long Road and Otis Street and Broad Cove Road? Yes, sir, if you can just come up?
I am the resident of.
If you could, if I can stop, if you can come up to the podium, please, and give us your name and address? None of us are used to this because of COVID. It's just, it's a very different procedure. Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Takashi Fukuda. I am the owner of 139 Otis Street, where MBTA is trying to. trying to put the bus stop.
At 149?
139.
139, okay.
Okay, then, it sounds like the plan has changed. Okay, about one and a half years ago, the MBTA sent us this plan.
Yep.
And at the time, after that, somehow the curb more, larger radius, so on, so on. And so far, no information MBTA provided us. And we don't know the final plan. And the original plan says, yes, so somehow trim our hedges and trim trees and so on, so on. But the new plan is also included those actions?
So JR, I thought that there was a public outreach and meetings and plans were shared?
There have been several public meetings, and plans have been shared at the Traffic Committee meetings. Those, we did not distribute plan sets with this, with the butter notice, as that is not typically what we do with the butter notices themselves. But I'm happy to share the final plan with you at any time, and I know Corinne has it available as well.
Yeah, but my question is, about bushes and trees, will be trimmed back?
They will be trimmed back to provide space to allow the work to be completed. So to the extent that it's necessary, and those trees or bushes overhang the existing right of way, then they will be trimmed back to that extent.
So the, are we talking about trimming of, let's say, bushes that are on private property?
Well, where bushes or trees are planted on private property, but then extend within, into the right of way with branches and such, we would be talking about that kind of condition, where in order to actually get the work done, we just have to trim back those bushes, and then, over time, they'll come back.
So this would not be a permanent reduction. This is to allow the work, and then there would be growth afterwards?
Correct.
Okay.
But that means, so if this corner, the current corner is about this curve, and sounds like more coming down and coming up, is correct?
Correct.
Okay, if so, then our property, our bushes and trees are quite away from the original plan, then no reason to cut or trim, is correct?
That is most likely correct.
So, to put it differently, my understanding is, so if the bushes and trees from your property are not affecting the construction activity, they would not be affected?
The answer is yes, no.
No, so I mean, I don't, I don't have, I don't have a plot plan for your property, but...
Yeah, actually, me too. I don't have either, therefore, I'm considered, yeah.
Yeah, if they're set back in the road, they won't be impacted.
Are you saying that they are set back, that they don't overhang onto the right of way?
Very difficult to explain.
Oh, sure.
Current curve is about this line, all this, 3A, about this one. Sounds like the plan is more coming out more in this way?
Correct.
So means the current line is far out?
So as a general rule, yes. There will still be a little work that will approach your property line because of the, we're going to be reconstructing the sidewalk.
Yes, okay, then, next question actually relating to that one. The sidewalk, current sidewalk along the water coming here in front of our property?
Yep.
Then goes, actually, nothing stopped. But this sidewalk will come out and extended here, surrounding?
Correct.
Straight line or the surrounding?
It, there is a little bit of a wind to it, because there will be two elements that come off of that. There's a primary element that goes to cross Otis Street. Here. You can see it better here, and here's your property.
Yeah.
And so, the first element of the sidewalk will cross here, but then, the regular sidewalk, a five-foot wide sidewalk, will come here to cross your driveway, and then...
It means not the whole, this sidewalk not coming out in this way?
Not, not too far.
Okay, then our current, our bush is coming out here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this area. Then this area will be cut or somehow carved?
So if I'm, if I'm scaling off of this drawing here, I think we might be looking at about two feet of trimming at tops, no more than that.
Two feet means about...
But I can, I can also meet you in the field and go over it.
Yeah, if possible, if you decide, then we'd like to have more carved and in.
Okay, understood.
Next one, you know already, the current zone, curb stones in front of 139?
Yes.
Actually, privately, we install. Then make sure those curb stones should be kept, and after this sidewalk inside, we install, make sure, is correct?
You understand what he's asking?
Yes, he has a, they installed the granite curb in front of their house, and we had discussed this, I think, a year and a half ago, where we'll just locate it behind the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
And the last one, handicap landing, landing space, somehow five, eight times ten, so means eight feet coming into our property. Is somehow, is possible somehow reduced?
So we're not on your property, it's all within...
Yes, I know, but you know, in our street, most of our properties are straight line, then only on our property coming inside.
Right.
Does, we feel somehow unfair.
But it's not impinging on your property?
I know, I know, but as an Otis Street resident, somehow, normal street line comes here, all of a sudden, in front of our property line comes in. Does our feeling?
So the, the challenge there is that that's a necessity of making the stop accessible for the ramp that comes out of the bus, so that wheelchairs can then access the bus or egress the bus safely and have a full landing area. That's why, that's the reason for the additional depth.
I know, but the word safety is not absolute. Safety is safety. And five must be eight feet, why not seven feet, why not six feet?
That's actually an ADA requirement, the eight foot by five foot. The eight foot deep is an ADA requirement for the landing area.
So there's...
So it is absolute.
Yeah.
So they do not have the discretion to reduce it?
I see. Okay, and last question relating to that street line. The current street line already in, inside, because we intentionally put our curb stones inside, we sought our property. We will not, we should not disturb the public street line, therefore intentionally little bit inside.
Right.
The current fire plan is the current curb stone line was a little bit out along to other residents, straight line?
Yes, we're not changing the alignment of the curb in the street, generally.
So means align to our current curb stone?
Correct. It'll run parallel to the, it'll, basically, it would run parallel to the center line of the street, the sidewalk will.
Yes, of course, parallel, but the other street line goes straight, then our curb stones about here. And you are talking about the current planes along this, our curb stone line?
I'm not sure I'm following the question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The street line, all these street lines, other lines comes here?
Yep.
Then our curb stone intentionally we put inside, here. Then the final plan goes along this other houses line, or along our current curb stone line?
So the, the street side of the sidewalk will be along the existing curb line?
It's our curb, curb line?
Correct.
Okay, not along this street line?
Well, where the curb is, is where they're building. So they're not changing the width of the traveled way.
Yes, but the street width from here is some, for example, forty feet, but ours forty-five, for example, in front of our property.
I'm not sure what, the street becomes narrower as you go up the hill.
Yes, no, not necessarily narrower, but parallel here, very much parallel. But we intentionally put inside, therefore now wider.
Perhaps, Natasha, can you?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we can, if the, it sounds like what Mr. Fukuda's saying is that where they put their curbs doesn't line up with the edge of the road further on up. We're more than happy to look at that, and if so, slide the curb line out, so that it's like, as long as, you know, it's the twelve foot.
Provided it's a safe travel lane, that's fine.
Exactly, so we're happy to do that.
Okay, then it's aligned with other houses?
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for, no, this was important.
Thank you for your comments.
Are there any other members of the public?
So my name's Eric Seasholts, I'm at 141 Otis. And I've been involved, I know, asking a lot of questions about this, and I appreciate what you guys have done for the traffic and so forth. So I do think it'll make a difference, because we're right on that street, and it is a concern, my son's bedroom is literally right there, and so I can only vision cars getting around it and something bad happening. And so that's one of the main reasons why I felt like I was very adamant about trying to slow this thing down. And so I do appreciate some of the things that you've done. Also, I'd just like to say, obviously, the ADA accessibility is an important thing, so I'm happy with that. The biggest thing that I still question, and I don't know, I know we've gone through it a few times, but is the usability of it. And again, maybe this is something we take up with the MBTA, because the frequency and the ridership there is very low. And we've gotten a number of community people to sign documents saying that they don't utilize it as much. And so for me, I look at it as, they reduced the number of stops last year, you know, and shifted it down towards us, or two years ago it was. And I think most of the people on Otis and so forth were thankful, because we were thinking, we're going to get a much better, fewer stops, less frequency, and instead, we got, I think, an uptick in number of stops, but fewer ones along Otis. And so from that perspective, I think a lot of people were disappointed. Like, if you talk to people within the community, I think they were very disappointed from that perspective. And so we were, and again, I don't know, this is again, maybe talking to MBTA and talking to higher people up over there, to listen, to say, how do we reduce the number of stops to make it more efficient for people who utilize it on our street, as well as making it maybe more efficient if people just go like a direct route, like an express, like we said, straight down 3A. And again, I don't know if this is the right platform or not, but I figured now is probably the time, since we're talking about some of that, so.
I mean, I can respond to that, so...
If you can just go up to the podium?
Sure, sorry.
So the MBTA right now is undertaking bus network redesign, so now is actually the perfect time to address those kind of questions. The bus network redesign team is working on a draft plan, which will make some changes to routes, keep, I think something like ninety-some percent of the stops will stay, but some routes will be changed. But there is a public process period that is coming up, starting in May. The MBTA will reach out directly to JR to coordinate with Hingham. We'll be coordinating with every municipality in our system. But you can coordinate with JR and see the draft map as soon as it's publicly available. I believe that's May 14th is when that's coming up, so. And then, I think that, I think that's really what you're asking about, is trying to improve efficiency or...
Yeah, efficiency and less frequent as possible.
Frequency, yeah.
I mean, I realize that there are people who need to utilize it, you know, efficiently throughout, but I think there's also a way to cut out that elbow, which might, ridership, for them coming from center of Hingham or over the shipyard, might be actually happy about. So there's possible ways, maybe, with it, some studies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
JR, I don't know, if there is changes, will that be circulated, just to make sure that everybody gets to see a diagram, or how does that work? I'm not sure the process, just because we're so close, I just didn't know. I think I saw the last one, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
If you've got my, well, and there are going to be a couple more updates to this now, just on the comments that we've just received. But yeah, I'm happy to circulate them by email back to you, or, and back to you as well.
So, so JR, do you have their emails?
I know I have Eric's, and I believe I, you have theirs also, yes.
So, so we should, you should just, when updates come, just shoot them out?
Yep.
And then, then you'll get them?
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there other members of the public, comments or questions? Yes, sir? If you, if you can just go?
Hi, I'm David McCarthy, 143 Otis Street. Just had a question on the timing of this project, and especially about the bump out, because again, the bump out was supposed to be two years away, but it sounds like it's happening at the same time, which is, which is great. I think, and a related question around that is, you know, as alluded to one of the other meetings, that's, people go fast. No one goes twenty-five miles an hour down that street. So I go twenty-five all the time, and I get people right on my...
They're on your rear end, yes.
So I don't think that's the town's responsibility, but I don't know what can be done to try to maybe more enforcement from the state on that road or whatever, but it is a, as everyone knows, and alluded to in previous meetings, it's a dangerous corner. And my mother was calling sixty years ago to have it slowed down, and it's still, still fast.
Natasha, please.
Yeah, so hopefully, these improvements will make a big difference in the speed, certainly as they make, as they make the turn. Not, don't know what they're going to do once they get around the corner. But, okay, so in terms of schedule, we do still have to get, obviously, town approval. We also need Mastot approval. That is usually not a super fast process. I'm guessing, I think we're thinking two months for a Mastot permit. Hopefully, construction the end of summer or early fall. But we have an on-call contractor, as soon as we get approval from all the pertinent, so Mastot and the town, we would be, it would go in the queue to be constructed.
And what sort of notice would the neighbors get?
Yeah, so our contractor will put up flyers, or actually, will just probably put flyers in your mailboxes two weeks prior to construction. Obviously, we'll, our contractor will also apply for a construction permit.
Sure.
I don't know if there's a drain layers permit, maybe. Whatever permits are required to do the construction, they will apply for those in advance, dig safe, et cetera. And then, two weeks' notice prior to construction. Construction itself is pretty quick, although Otis at Broad Cove is going to take a little longer, because it's a much more complex construction. So I would say, Otis at Governor Long is going to take five to ten days from start to finish to construct. I would say probably more like a month, especially working with police details and on state, within state highway for managing traffic.
Got it. Thank you. Great question. Any other member of the public? I think we are prepared for motion, then.
And I would make a motion to approve the request of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to install MBTA bus system infrastructure improvements designed to improve accessibility at the intersection of Otis Street and Governor Long Road. The improvements include the construction and or reconstruction of concrete sidewalk, handicap ramps, granite curbing, signage, and striping within the town-owned right of way on Otis Street at the intersection with Governor Long Road. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works, as outlined in the letter dated March 4th, 2022.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Ready for the next motion? You're not finished.
One more.
There's one more.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to install MBTA bus system infrastructure improvements designed to improve accessibility at the intersection of Otis Street and Broadcove Road. The improvements will want, include, one, reconstruction and reorientation of the intersection of Otis Street and Broadcove Road, consistent with the proposed construction planned for the Route three A improvement project. Two, the construction and/or reconstruction of concrete sidewalk, handicap ramps, granite curbing, new guardrail, signage, and striping within the town-owned right-of-way on Otis Street, and within the state highway layout in Otis Street and Broadcove Road. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated March fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moved in second, we vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That's also unanimous. Now, thank you. Natasha Corrin, thank you very much. And JR, appreciate your effort here.
He's next.
Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the Traffic Committee's recommended parking fine structure. And we have JR, and we have Chief Jones. Which of you will begin the presentation? The chief is getting up. Okay.
Me.
Okay.
Is it here?
Actually, there it be.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're, before tonight, to ask you to approve a new parking fine structure for parking violations of the town of Hingham. The Traffic Committee voted on these on a meeting on, on March twenty-third, and approved to be recommended to the board for the following changes. A fire department-related fines, which are parking within ten feet of a hydrant or obstructing a fire lane, increase from the current fine of twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars. Proposal of increasing the fine of obstructing a sidewalk and crosswalk from twenty dollars to twenty-five dollars. And increasing the fine for the violation of parking within twenty feet of an intersection or over one foot from a curb from fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars. And basically, those changes will bring all the fines within, you know, it'll just bring them up to the, to the current structure that all, that they'd all be the same, so they're in groups. So there'll be the fifty-dollar fines, and then there's the twenty-five-dollar fines. So the, we're also looking to add additional violations. One of them is, is being a vehicle parked in a EV, electric vehicle space, in violation, so it's not an electric vehicle parking in that spot, that would be a proposed fine of fifty dollars. And adding the fine of blocking a bicycle lane of twenty-five dollars, and then adding the fine of parking outside of the marked lanes of a parking space for a fine of twenty-five dollars.
So Chief, I, I understand the, the new violations that are being added. What is the motivation for increasing the fines for the, for the existing ones? Is it, are we finding that the existing fine structure doesn't work? Is this to simplify? What's, what's, what's the goal?
So it, it's both. It's to simplify, so it's bringing, right now, there's fifteen dollars, twenty-five dollars, and fines, and then the, the handicapped is, is a hundred dollars. So it's simplifying, bringing all the fines into, into, into the same structure, as well as, the reason we're doing it now is we need to order new ticket books, so if we're going to be changing the, the fine structure before we do that, it would be the time to do it now.
So if we do not approve, you won't be ordering new ticket books, and no one's gonna get tickets? You just gave us an incentive.
We will be, but it'll be the old structure.
But, but seriously, you know, making sure that public safety issues are respected, and that, you know, the guidelines and the requirements that your department, the Traffic Committee, have identified, that they're respected, that is important. And I just wanna make sure that we're, that the fines that are being proposed are consistent with, with applicable standards. Do you know how this compares to our neighboring towns? Is it basically the same?
They are very similar. We did compare these, this fine structure with surrounding towns, and they, they all fall within what our surrounding towns do.
Thank you. Liz?
Thank you, Chief. I was gonna ask that, how we compare with our surrounding communities, so thank you for, for doing that. No questions about these, one comment, though. I know some people are expecting to see the handicap parking spot fines, and the reason that's not on the list is that that requires a change in the bylaws, so we can't, we're not voting on that tonight.
Correct.
That would be a change in the town's bylaw.
Correct. No other questions. Thank you.
Bill?
So did, did, did Master General Law Chapter ninety, twenty, eight and a half allow for the increase?
It does, yes.
Okay, got it. Great, thank you.
And then the only, nothing will change with the, with the late fee structure. It's gonna remain the same as it, as it exists right now.
JR, is there anything you wanted to add here?
No, Chief Jones covered it.
Are there questions from members of the public who are concerned about parking fines? We're gonna get your names.
I, I have one alibi question. So currently, we don't have electric vehicle parking space violations, right? Those are all new.
Right, so we don't, we don't have one that would fit that specifically. There's one that would currently use, which is restricted or prohibited area.
Yeah.
But to, to capture the issue that we're seeing, a lot more of is people parking in an EV spot that do not have an electric vehicle and, and taking up that spot, especially with the town's gonna be installing new charging stations around town. We thought it was appropriate to add a specific fine for that.
And the bike, bike lanes are relatively new too, right?
Yes.
A couple of years old, and outside the lines violation, is that a marked lane violation, or is?
So it's, if you're parked across two parking spaces, for example?
I got it, yeah.
Or on the side of the road, you're?
Kind of in the middle of two.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Well, Bill, I'm glad you brought up the EV space because we are getting new EV charging stations, and part of the grant that is funding it is to make sure that we have appropriate fines, so that if people are parked there improperly, that, that there will be fines. So this is bringing us into compliance with the grant that the town is receiving to actually fund the EV parking spots. So thank you for, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Then I am prepared for a motion on this.
Make a motion pursuant to Master General Law Chapter ninety, Section twenty, A and a half, and all other applicable laws. Select Board for the Town of Hingham hereby, hereby amends the town's schedule of parking violations and fines as follows. One, increase fire department-related fines from twenty-five to fifty dollars for the following violations. A, within ten feet of a fire hydrant. B, fire line, fire lane obstruction. Two, increase obstructing sidewalk, crosswalk fine from twenty to twenty-five dollars. Three, increase within twenty feet of intersection and over one foot from curb fines from fifteen to twenty-five dollars. Four, add the following new violations and associated fines. A, electric vehicle parking space violation, fine fifty dollars. B, bicycle lane violation, fine twenty-five dollars. C, outside the lines violation, fine twenty-five dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. We vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, it's unanimous. Chief, thank you for the presentation. Next item on our agenda is to review the Lincoln School Apartments' calendar year, twenty twenty-two budget and capital needs assessment, the CNA update. And I believe we have Amy Farrell, who's gonna join us up here. And Art Robert will, will be leading the discussion.
Sure, just, just a few introductory notes. This is a follow-up presentation to information shared in January. We'll hear about the Lincoln School Apartments' budget reflecting, it will reflect some adjustments based on new information that I'm sure we'll, we'll hear about this evening. More importantly, what we'll hear, hearing tonight, it really reflects the culmination of months of effort and focus on this facility and affordable housing, including amending the lease between the town and the Lincoln School Apartments LLC, updating accounts and allowing the million-dollar-plus windows replacement project to go forward, updating projections and procedures for the, for moving cash flow rent from the project to the town, and along the way, transitioning some new staff, a new zoning administrator and new land use coordinator that'll allow us to enable a focus on, on housing and do some long-term planning. I think thanks are certainly due to leadership of the trust, Board of Managers, the staff involved, and certainly council, making this all happen.
Thank you. Art, Amy?
I guess the first thing I'd like to do is call to order the meeting of the Board of Managers of the Lincoln School Board of Managers. And would you like an introduction to myself and the Board of Managers?
You could introduce the members who are here, that would be terrific.
Everyone is to my left. Steve Spall, Matt Dillis, and Gretchen Condon. There is one other managing member who is not here this evening, and myself, Amy Farrell, ninety-five Central Street, right across the street from the Lincoln School Apartments, Chair of both the Board of Managers as well as the Housing Trust, so I wear two hats.
If I can disintroduce, am I correct that we do not have a quorum for the Housing Trust here?
That's correct. I will, though, introduce the Vice Chair of the Housing Trust, Jack Falvey. The trust is the managing member of the LLC, so it's important that both boards are represented.
Thank you.
So I just wanna dive right in after Art's remarks. We're presenting a couple of things this evening. The first is the calendar year twenty-two budget. The, this is a practice that has been renewed and reestablished, and part of that renewal and reestablishment was as we looked at finalizing the contract and the lease amendment for the Windows Capital Project, which was done in, in November. And we have presented our budget in January. We voted it the Board of Managers in January, but we had one key item that was still pending, which was an updated and refreshed capital needs assessment, and that capital needs assessment.
You're fine. This is not great, but it's not your fault.
We're trying to be helpful, put the budget up on the screen.
I'm a little.
We have it, we have it.
Yeah, I have, I have everything.
Everybody has one.
We have one.
That's worse.
I know.
I'm just gonna go this way. And, and so we presented it so folks would have a sense of what the operations of the, of the current year, and then the proposed twenty-two year would look like, but now we have the capital needs assessment completed. And included in that is a suggested replacement reserve annual contribution. And frankly, it reflects the amount of capital expected to be expended over the next ten years, and an annual replacement contribution of three hundred thousand versus eighty thousand or seventy thousand, that was the prior contribution. And so, you know, I guess we can, what we can do is just walk through the budget itself. There's been no changes. Income is rental revenue mostly, primarily receipt of the Section Eight subsidy. The controllable expenses are pretty stable year over year. I will say that in this section, if you have significant turnover, you might see an increase year over year. So for instance, twenty-one to budget to actual, you see an increase, and that's a reflective twelve, reflects twelve units that turned. The non-controllable expenses are holding fairly steady. Taxes, rent, and reserves are things that we care about. This property pays real estate taxes to the town. The base rent is a function of the ground lease. And then you see the replacement reserve originally up for twenty-one that was paid, and then the increase in twenty-two. We come down to a calculation of, after operating expenses, projected cash flow, and twenty-one is now actual, and that cash flow rent, or ninety percent of cash flow rent, that three hundred forty-seven thousand dollars has been sent to the town. As they say, the check is in the mail. I have confirmed that that's been cut by Corcoran, and that's been the established practice for remittances via check. But you will see the impact of the increased cash flow, excuse me, replacement reserve contribution in twenty-two, and the impact to that and the effect of reducing the projected cash flow rent.
Right. So looking at first, under the expenses, I see you had maintenance, the budget was about eighty thousand, projected was a hundred and twenty thousand for twenty, I mean, it's substantially higher, and then your, your proposed twenty, twenty-two budget is, is backed down. And I just wanna understand why that makes sense.
In twenty-one, we saw frankly the vestiges of COVID, maintenance, cleaning. Some of that's been backed off, but not all of it. And then you also see some, some unit turn is in there as well.
And then the dramatic increase in the non-capital replacement purchases, that's right below maintenance. I mean, you're talking.
That's, that's exactly where you're gonna see unit turns. That's, that's the bulk of it.
Okay. But are, are you comfortable with the twenty twenty-two proposed budget of the sixty-three?
I, I am, I am. If the unit turns are higher, and some of those numbers go up, frankly, we can absorb that cost. It, it would impact the bottom line.
Okay.
And, no.
So while we're on the budget, I know there's more to cover, but I wanted to give my fellow board members an opportunity for, for questions or comments. Liz?
I, we've, I've looked at this with Amy before, but just to, just about the maintenance, I know the trash removal and the dumpsters was a big item. Is that, is that under maintenance, or is that somewhere else?
In maintenance, you have public area contracts, yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. No questions.
I have a couple of questions related to capital need, but no.
Just on the budget, okay. So please.
And I guess the only thing, just a quick status as to where we are. I have a lot of notes here, sorry. This, just to refresh everyone's memory, is a sixty-unit property, fifty-five, one-bedroom, four, two beds, and one studio. Presently, there's one vacancy. There are, there have been six unit turns year-to-date, so that's actually kinda high in three months. And we, I just wanted to say. It'll come to me.
What is your next topic? Because I may have a question on this before we?
I think I'm done with the cap, the operating budget, and so I guess that would be.
Okay, so I, something that's not reflected in the numbers, not intended to, but it's of concern to, I know your group and our group is, how's morale? How, how is, how are the residents doing? And, I mean, the numbers can be great, but if they're not happy, I'd like to know. And if they're happy, I'd also like to know.
So I would say, in general, I feel folks are genuinely happy or generally happy. That's, I think during COVID, there were some folks who were concerned about safety protocols because there was a, a range of safety protocols. Some folks were very diligent in masking, and they brought their concerns to us. The Board of Managers purchased masks, additional masks for folks to, to have. And then ultimately, toward the end of the pandemic, we posted signage done. So folks were aware, were reminded this was a town-owned facility, and what the town's practice was for mask-wearing. I think that impacted morale, if you will, because the public spaces were closed, and the common area, there's a, there's a kind of a recreational facility on the first floor, and that was closed. And that was challenging for folks. There's someone on site from Corcoran. They have, they have a kind of administrative person, and then more of a custodial person. And there's someone there from seven to five every day. They kind of overlap during the middle part of the day. And I would. And I would say that in general, I think people are pretty happy. One of the things that may make them happier is that in this capital needs budget, we have money for next year budgeted for the common area and kind of generally sprucing up some of the interior spaces, and there's an expectation the residents will appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. Liz, or Bill, anything?
Obviously, I know the windows project was a big undertaking. What do you see as your next big capital need?
Well, maybe I should just give an update on the windows project. So refresher, we signed a contract with a firm out of Bridgewater named Verica. They have 12 months from the time of the contract signing to complete the work. There've been a couple of onsite meetings. Art got a chance to attend one, so did JR. And the windows have been ordered, and they're in the fabrication process. We expect materials to be delivered June, July period. And the second part of the order, if you will, is the windows are quite evident, but then there are the three entrance doors that include a lot of glass, and those are also being replaced as well. And those will come within the same contract, but they are in the ordering and finalizing the specifications right now. Working closely with Mark Coughlin at Strzokolowski, and I expect an updated schedule values, not values, but calendar in the next week or so. Next, most important item is actually, we pulled something forward into this year, which is a replacement generator, backup generator. And that was something that Corcoran felt was pretty important, given the age of the current generator and what could happen if it didn't work in the middle of the winter.
Right. What's the status of that?
It, the prime contact at Corcoran's got three names. I think he worked with Kathy Riley to get a couple, and he's soliciting bids. And then, once we get those, we'll move through a contract after we vote them. One, just to follow up on a conversation Liz and I had about, as we think long-term about capital and also net zero components of things, we gave a little bit of discussion to, is there such a thing as a net zero generator? And we came with a conclusion, it had to work, no matter what. And so it's going to be gas-fired. I've asked you.
And Amy, how's the elevator working? I know the elevators in the past, it's always been kind of.
Today, the elevator's fine.
Today?
And, you know, maybe, I did ask the folks at Corcoran to give me an update on some things, you know, what have we expended some funds on? And we upgraded the elevator in 2018. We spent probably another $35,000 last year on an electric panel. So short of rebuilding the cab, all the guts of this thing have been rebuilt. One elevator for, you know, the entire building can be problematic, and it ranges from things like, there was an electrical switch that just didn't work to a resident standing in front of the door, holding it, and that can set it off. We had cameras installed last year, and the cameras face the panel, and the point is so that when the person comes to fix it, they'll see what the panel last showed prior to the not working. And that actually did have residents a little bit concerned. They were like, why are you spying on us? We said, actually, no, we're spying on your elevator, and we're trying to make sure that that, you know, we understand what the panel is saying just before it goes out of service.
What's the useful life?
It's been essentially rebuilt, so there's an expectation that it will get us another five years. I don't think it's in the first five years of this capital plan, but that's actually the thing about capital. It's a plan, and it's not in cement. So things may, you know, move around based on what happens.
So shall we move to the next part of the presentation?
Sure.
Your capital needs assessment.
Yes. So just a little bit of background, and this will be the third capital needs assessment that the town has done since we owned the property. Capital needs assessments will typically project out 20 years. 10 years is a window that is kind of useful, but updated every five. So we have one dated 2008, 2016, and 2022. It helps us map the sequence of the repairs or replacements that we might do, but always reserve the right to move things ahead in the queue. It provides cost estimates that are the best available at the time, but until you actually bid something, you're unsure or unclear how true to the current market they are. One thing that happened is, we didn't accept, we talked about this before we voted and accepted it, and Corcoran was quite involved in asking some questions. And one thing they asked and was ultimately amended was the cost of installation and labor. And with our requirement to pay prevailing wage, we needed to have a, to value that. So that's something that's included here. The first year is the windows, and that's been bid, and so we have a cost. In terms of how costs have escalated, it's probably helpful to know that that line item from the 2016 capital needs assessment, window replacement was for $300,000, and the bid came in at a million, too. So that's.
Wow. Okay.
But rents have gone up as well. So I think we really need to, you know, be mindful that it's, there is some balance So to Bill's earlier question, this year, the windows and a generator replacement completed by the end of, and paid for by the end of 22. In 23, the next year is another $600,000 planned, and the big items in that would include some unit interiors, building exteriors, some of the mortar and the masonry brickwork has some line items for that. And there's $200,000 for the common area. There, I can't read my writing. And those are the major categories for next year. The following years, this is a lumpy presentation, even though the replacement reserve contribution is even, the following couple of years show a more modest contribution, but in 26, there's half a million dollars budgeted, and most of that's in the mechanical and boilers. In '27 is when we see another $400,000, or $500,000 to $400,000 of that is the roof. The other contribution or tool that this report provides us is a projection for a capital needs assessment, excuse me, a replacement reserve account and contributions and withdrawals from that. So starting with this year's $300,000 contribution, they've projected out an annual contribution inflated, I think it's by 3%, and so that continues to the cycle of the capital needs. So the board voted to accept the amended, our board voted to accept the capital needs assessment at our meeting on the 28th. We also voted an amended capital, calendar year 22 budget to reflect the updated replacement reserve contribution.
You sat through a discussion with the META in terms of improving accessibility. Is that a concern at Lincoln School Apartments? Is that, are you comfortable with where we are?
So in the current 60 units, there are units that are accessible. The building itself is accessible because of the corridors and.
And the entryways are.
The entryways and the, there is an elevator. But much of it's grandfathered. If this were built new, you know, there would be different types of specifications. And I've spoken with the architect to be concerned that anything that we're doing might trigger more work, and he felt, no, at this point, no. But he also did confirm that, you know, anyone that would come in, the authority here is the town, and the town, someone from the building department would come and make sure that things were compliant. But we have accessible units. There are, in the, as you step from the newer building to the older, there are steps. So if folks have perhaps started in that older building and can no longer do the steps, what they would do is request a reasonable accommodation, and then they would be moved to the more accessible, newer part of the building.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Can you just talk a little bit about the process for if, as things change, if something, you know, breaks or, you know.
We have to move things around on the calendar.
Need to move things around, exactly. What's the process for that?
So it would be Corcoran experiencing such, I would say, not satisfactory service from one of the major, you know, panel breaks, and we move something forward. I don't know what more can be done to the elevator, but that does seem to be the, you know, one of them, but that tends to be repaired, and that's an expense. You know, I think what happens is then you push things that are not life safety-related further out. So I would say anything mechanical or fire alarm-related or life safety, if something seemed to not, you know, if there were concerns about that, that would get moved forward, and things like common area redecorating would get pushed out to the later years.
Sure.
And that, you know, that's not as appealing to residents, but, you know, it's what we're responsible for. But Corcoran, the management company.
Would raise that.
Yeah, they're our primary and first point.
Great. Thank you.
Bill?
No, I know that you're going to have a lot of capital needs going forward, and it's good to see that your budget does have some money you can use to address some of these. I know you can't address all of them, but it's good that your budget's showing some growth, which is great.
The hope is that there's enough in the capital needs and replacement reserve to accommodate most of this. But I think the big variable is when we go to bid something, are the costs that are included in the needs assessment reflective of what current market pricing is? That is, I think, an unknown.
Anything else?
No, other than thank you and thank you, thank to the board, too. Thank you for your great work. Appreciate it.
Are you satisfied, and is the board satisfied with Corcoran?
I'm going to, I will go last, but, and I will also say that I have, I've been a conscript. I've got some relatively new members, and then we have our longstanding member, Gretchen. So I think maybe folks can just, you know, respond, you know, what they say.
I've been involved in affordable housing for 30 years, and I, so I've walked hundreds of properties.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just so that everyone else can see you, if you don't mind coming up to the lectern.
Steve Spall, I've been involved in affordable housing for just shy of 30 years. I've walked probably thousands of properties at this point. I'd say Corcoran's doing a very good job. As Amy mentioned earlier, some of the common areas just need a little bit of sprucing up, but they've done a very good job with what they have to work with.
Great. Thank you.
Matt Dillis. Matt Dillis, I've known for a long time. I dragged him onto this board because Matt knows everything about construction that I don't know, so.
That's a strong introduction.
My name's Matt Dillis. I'm a registered professional engineer, civil engineer, with 35 years' experience in commercial real estate, 20-plus years specifically in multifamily. And I'm the guy who is tasked with, for owners and lenders and investors looking at properties and doing capital planning, but also sounding the alarm when I see issues with deferred maintenance, deferred capital. And I'm happy to say that while I'm the new guy, the proof is in the pudding. The property is obviously well-cared-for. No significant deferred maintenance, nothing that's been pushed off, so it's good to see.
That's a very strong endorsement. Yes, thank you.
Gretchen, are you willing to stand up?
You didn't have a choice, so.
I'm retired now, obviously, but my career was spent in managing elderly housing, both for the Housing Authority and for the Friends Home in Hingham.
Gretchen, if you can just give us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gretchen Condon.
Great, thank you.
And Corcoran, I know how difficult it can be working sometimes with elderly residents who, that's their whole, you know, circle of life right there in that apartment. And Corcoran does a wonderful job. Their staff is, I couldn't be happier with them, what they've, there's some things that can't be helped, but they've really gone beyond, so we're happy.
Great, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And in closing, I would say I've had the opportunity to work pretty closely with the staff that's been assigned to Lincoln School, and I've been really happy. I'm high maintenance, and they have been really good. So I appreciate what they've done. And we had to do some research and going back into the history of the property since it's been owned, and really, they were very thoughtful and patient, and frankly, flexible as we pivoted how we would like to manage things and report on things, and they accommodated that. So I'm grateful.
And am I correct that the, their fee is what's listed as the management fees?
Correct.
In the budget? Great. And I am not seeing any real material inflation in those.
So they bid every, the contract is up for bid every three years. They're on the third year of a three-year contract, and so they were the only bidder last time we opened this up. And they do know the property well. I don't know what their pricing will look like next time, because there's been more time involved this last year. But I'm hopeful that, you know, we've got a new operating module going, and so we're going to be just fine.
Great. So this is the time that I would typically ask for comments from members of the public. I am not seeing members of the public, other than, I see Susan Murphy here. So this was a very thorough presentation, and I know, I speak for the three of us about really appreciating the work of the group. Amy, you are their fearless leader, but I know you are one of the board, and so your efforts are really very much appreciated, and the board's efforts are sincerely appreciated because Lincoln School Apartments would not be functioning as it is today without this group. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Art, we have before us a proposed vote, I can find my vote list, here you go, to approve the budget. Could you explain why this board is approving the budgets in the lease?
Yes.
And so the lease says that they present the budget to us, and we are to review and approve it?
Correct.
Okay. So I am prepared to accept the motion concerning the 2022 budget.
I will make a motion to approve the Lincoln Apartments LLC calendar year 2022 budget as presented pursuant to Section 6.4 of the ground lease between the Town of Hingham and Lincoln Apartments LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, it's unanimous. Thank you.
You did a great job.
You can't leave until you.
I am now adjourning the Lincoln School Board of Managers meeting. Do I need a second?
You need a second and a vote.
I would like to entertain, that's, I can't make the motion. Would you like to make that motion to adjourn? And do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
You don't have to do roll call, though.
That's true. That's true.
Next item on our agenda would be the appointments. I don't think we have any scheduled for this evening. Next would be an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Either any members of the public with comments, seeing none. Town Administrator Select Board reports, starting with Mr. Mayo.
Not tonight, thank you.
Michelle?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Art?
In the interest of brevity, I would say not this evening as well.
Liz?
I'll just make a quick announcement.
I'll just make a quick announcement. Um, there's the public safety building tours tomorrow, um, fire and police. And then the select board is planning on, um, attending the Hingham Unity Council panel on Thursday, April 7.
Yes. Bill?
The spring sports started last weekend, uh, Little League and lacrosse and soccer and all those great sports we have in Hingham. I'm just reminded by all the great volunteers we have, uh, in town that run all those great programs. So thank you to everyone who can make that happen.
Yes. And then Hingham Sports Partnership had a wonderful event, uh, this past Sunday. Well-attended and it really shows the best of Hingham. And, uh, it was, hats off to the sports partnership. And so at this point, um, I would accept a motion to go into executive session pursuant mass general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. Since I am declaring that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town and the board would not convee- not reconvene in open session. Is there such a motion?
Second.
No. Who's making the motion?
So moved. Or didn't you just make it?
I didn't. I would, I said I would accept that motion. So Liz has just made the motion?
So moved.
And Bill?
Second.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We go into executive session and the board will not reconvene in open session. Thank you.
Thank you.